Oh, I told you, just to let you know. I went through everything else.
Hi, Chris. I don't.
Hey, how's it going?
Yeah, so I'm doing great. Sorry to interrupt like all this.
No worries.
So I emailed you about.
Can you ask him to test it, to say something? Just so we can test it, so we can test that volume.
Hola amigos.
Do you want to put him on screen or see his name at least?
Call the October Board of Education meeting to order. Kyle, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Thank you, Kyle. Before we start with the meeting, I need a motion to move some things around on the agenda, please. I'd like to move item nine A up to right after your board presentations and we need to remove item, the executive session, item thirteen. Could I have a motion, please? Motion made. Is there a second? There's a second. Any discussion on the motion? Harry, none? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. First item on the agenda, board presentations.
Yes, I'm tonight I'd like to honor our four board members. This will be their last regular board meeting. We thought we'd start a new tradition and present each of you with a plaque reading, "The Board of Education Presented to" your name, Jack Morehouse, in this case, "For your years of service and contributions towards the continued success of Stonington Public Schools and the students we serve." And those are the dates of the service. We have one of these for Jack Morehouse, Frank Tedesco, Lisa Morrison, and Gordon. Would like to thank you again. I think this is a nice tradition. We'll keep this going.
Next item on the agenda, update on COVID mitigation. Dr. Riley?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for moving that up. I thought we have had some questions in our community about where we are with our COVID. Maybe the masking and also the vaccine issues, so I wanted to let the board know there is an executive order regarding masks. We continue to have to wear masks indoors. We encourage students, teachers to be outdoors, taking mask breaks as much as possible. But that will go on until February. I'd also like to talk about, let me move this down so you can hear me better. There's some questions about the testing and the amount of time students need to be out when they're in close contacts. And we have been we've been following the DPH guidelines on everything we've done the last year and a half. And the DPH, the ledge line, they say we need to keep students out ten days if they're in close contact. Some districts are moving towards a seven day. Somewhere continuing with the ten day. And I've been adamant about staying with ledge lights recommendations. However, I believe if you look at our our rates of infection in our area. I've talked with our medical advisor. I've talked with ledge line. They recommend ten, but they understand seven is okay or could be okay if there's certain testing precautions put in place. So I want the board to know that we are working on moving the close contact timeout from seven to ten, I'm sorry, from ten to seven days. And we'll be working on that next week, notifying parents as to what they need to do if they are in close contact. Because seven days works if there's certain testing done on certain days. That will get our students back into school a lot sooner. This again is based on keeping our kids in school as much as possible. And another thing, I just need to thank our community and our parents. Our rate of infection is really low. I think this is a way to recognize that and thank our community to reduce the amount of time students are out of class. So our goal would be to implement this policy during next week, notify parents and have it effective beginning October 25th. That's a week from Monday. And just one other thing. Representative Greg Howard today sent a a letter that I fully support to the state, to the commissioner and the public health, citing some of the reasons that I've just mentioned, that we have a low rate in our area and students are missing, missing time in class. The other thing that he mentions, and I think this is very interesting, some of our neighboring states like Rhode Island and Massachusetts have some creative ways to keep students in even more days. And one of those is a test and stay program. Now legally, that's not allowed in Connecticut. But basically, if you're, if you're in close contact and you do a test, then you can stay in school. It's one of those quick tests. I've let our health department know and I will send a letter to, to the state. If Connecticut is interested in joining Massachusetts or Rhode Island and some other states with the test and stay. All of our nurses, all of our illustrators, me included, agree that that's an important way to go for our kids. And that we would volunteer to be a pilot program in the state of Connecticut to keep our kids in school longer. So that's, that's the update. You, there are some attachments here about the number of students that are out based on close contacts and now based on testing. We have a very low rate of testing in this area. And I think moving from the ten to seven days is again, recognition of that in our community. And hopefully, we can do some of the things like the test and stay to even increase more in the school time for our students. That's my report on that. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Riley?
Dr. Riley, I fully support the test and stay as you do as well. Just a couple of questions on that program. If I'm not sure, you know, we're there, but have we considered, do we need added staffing for test and stay? And where do we get? Does the state supply or we have to purchase the test kits?
My understanding is the state has a pool of money for testing that they haven't spent. And I believe it was 25 million. It's significant. And we would certainly want to tap into that. Again, as, as vaccines become available for our five to 11 year olds, that may decrease some of the test and stay anyway, but whatever it is, we'll figure it out. It's important enough, whether there's state money or not, if we need to hire people to do it, we want our kids in school.
I do too. I just want us to please consider, you know, the staffing, so we're not putting added pressure on the con staffing. So if we have the opportunity and the state approves as a pilot program, is that we consider adding staffing in each school for test and stay? Will do. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Riley? Gordon, anything on your end? Are you good?
I'll take that. That is good.
I'm good. Thank you.
That's what I thought. All right. Next item on the agenda, comments from citizens.
Okay, I think this is on. So I would just like to start off by saying a lot of what was just touched on is kind of what I wanted to come here to speak about tonight. I think that there was a very concerning report last week that came out.
Excuse me, just for one second. Could you just say it? I'm sorry.
No problem. Ashley Koutocho. There was a report that came out that there's been a rapid increase in children needing behavioral health treatments here in Connecticut. And it was really surprising to see some of the information that they had to report. They are seeing two and a half times the number that they saw pre pandemic. And at Connecticut Children's, there was over 40 kids a week in the ER, or sorry, a day waiting in the ER for placement in 50 to 60 cases a day at Yale New Haven Children's. This is a specialty department that is seeing these children come in. And they said it's a lot to do with the psychological and emotional toll that COVID-19 has had on them. These children are here because they are thinking of self harm and have suicidal thoughts. Over the summer, it was an average of 15 to 16 kids a day. School started back up and the spike came again that they had seen in the spring. And it's just really concerning to correlate the start of school and the spike that these children are having for their psychological well being. And I just want to say to the administration and the board, I think it's so important to be looking at not just how the hospitals fix this, but what can we do as school districts to mitigate these things for children, to mitigate the effect that this is having on them? And I've been at numerous board meetings and statements have been made that it's the parents who are making a big deal out of things. The kids are fine. They're resilient. It's the parents who are complaining. And I, I just can't agree with that because as parents, we're having our children come home and confide in us. We're having our children complain about something or feel sad about something or trying to watch them work their way emotionally through things. And we were helping set up Dean's Mills outdoor classroom and my son looked at the space and he goes, but mom, what are the fourth graders going to do if there's not three feet of space and then they're going to have to wear their mask outside and then they're not going to be happy? I'm looking at my son and we're just supposed to be enjoying this moment. And he's worried about how they're going to feel outside with their masks on and being told that it's not enough space. And it's just something I just, it hit me with, I'm sitting here and, you know, I have a young son. I don't even know what some of these middle schoolers and high schoolers who already have so many other things going on psychologically and emotionally are going through with all of this. And I think that as parents, we need to come and we need to open up and we need to let people know what we're hearing at home. And it's the restrictions, it's the quarantines. And, you know, Representative Greg Howard came out with a great statement today and he's pushing for us and I am really pleased to hear that the administration has seen that and they're in support of that and that, you know, we're going to take steps towards fixing some of this for our children because that timeout from school really hurt them. And we don't need more of it. We need them back in school. We need things normalized for them. And we need them to kind of go back to just being kids enjoying and learning. And so I appreciate these steps forward and I look forward to hearing more things from the board at what we're doing to bring that back for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board?
There we go. Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Connie Samonic, Sixth School Street in Mystic. And I just want to briefly again state my concern about the critical race theory that is being taught in our country to elementary school children as young as kindergarten, all the way up to high school. I know that in the Stonington curriculum, there's those three words, critical race theory, can't be found. But words like culturally responsive classroom and diversity, equity, and inclusion are code words for critical race theory. And I just want to implore to the board to be aware of that. I don't know if you are. I don't know if parents are. But the more you study about critical race theory and the movement behind that, it's a very scary thing. So I just really want the board to discuss it when they can, look at the curriculum and see what books are being used, what the purpose of those books are. Just for one example, in the the family anti racism circle, one of the books is, "We Are Not Yet Equal." What is, what is meant by that? What are the, what are the teachers trying to say to the students? I just want the board to discuss this and look carefully at it and all parents to look carefully at the books that their children are reading and what is meant or trying to be said by using those books. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I figure out the button? I did. I'm Meg Blanchett. I live in Pocketuck. I have a young daughter who will be going to West Vine next year. She's very excited about the big school, talks about it constantly. And I just wanted to take a minute to come up and thank the board for the work that they are doing around diversity, around ensuring that students of all kinds who come from all backgrounds feel safe in our community and in their school system. As a constituent, I was concerned when I first moved here that that might not be a focus in this town. And as raising a young white daughter, I want to make sure that she understands the responsibility that she has. And also as a female, what she might face, and I want the people around her to support her. And, you know, she's, she's for right now. We have a lot of books that talk about race and about equity and inclusion. And therefore, she manages to understand what it means to be different and how it's okay to be different and that we need to make sure that we protect people who might have extra balances against them. And I think that if a four year old can, then we need to understand that older kids can as well and give them the opportunity to be good citizens of this world and good citizens to each other and just coming down to kindness. And so I really appreciate the work I see the board doing. I am I'm filled with a lot of pride about it. I talk to my friends about it. I'm constantly trying to get friends to move to Stonington for various reasons. And the work that y'all are doing there is a big pull and a big reason that I'm getting people interested. So thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board?
Hi, I'm Bruce Burton and Sixth School Street. And I just want to also reiterate our adamantly, we're adamantly against the critical race theory. And I know there's so much controversy about it. But I think as far as the school is concerned, the, the schools should be concerned with what to teach and not how to teach. I think that's totally in the parent's court. However, they want their children to be taught about history. We can't change history. And I think it's beyond us to even try it because it's, it's breaking everybody apart. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kenyon Murphy. I live on Pequot Court in Pocketuck for over six years. Been a fourth grader and a sixth grader, excuse me, a fourth grader and first grader at West Vine Street School. So I'd like to take a few moments to discuss our response to the COVID-19 pandemic to the community that affects our children, especially our elementary students. There's a phrase in Latin, "prenum non acare." First, do no harm. Part of the Hippocratic oath, and it's been the mantra of healthcare providers for centuries. Parents were often reminded of the importance to follow a CDC guidance, reminded every day to follow science. But when science is it's recognized by CDC conflicts with ledge light, CIAC, or other governing bodies, parents start to lose confidence in the system. Riley pointed pointed out this earlier, but as a parent of a quarantine child, I can stay from experience that the amount of disruption that it causes for the family, there's a significant amount of school laws. Just said, this last school year was completely absent of full time learning. As we all know, quarantines are not limited to missing school. So extracurricular sports are canceled for a child in quarantine. We should do everything we can to keep our kids active. Currently have an epidemic of childhood obesity and childhood obesity is the leading comorbidity that can complicate COVID-19. So as a parent of elementary schools, students in quarantine, myself and others, our jobs and our ability to put food on the table is at risk. I was supposed to be at work this week. My child should have been at work at school this week based on CDC guidelines for unvaccinated individuals who remain unsymptomatic. They may shorten their quarantine to seven days. And if they receive a negative COVID PCR test, no greater than 14 hours per day, they can, they can exit quarantine. But that is a, that pretty much guarantees that someone doesn't have COVID-19. But whereas to follow ledge light, which if you've ever gone to their website, it's there's a, there's a section on instructions on how to isolate for COVID-19. It brings you to a link for Los Angeles County. It's out of date. The quarantine guidance comes from the Virginia Department of Health. I mean, these are just PDF files. We could have slapped a town of Stonington banner on it at least, but there's just a lot of inconsistency. I think that it's concerning that there doesn't seem to be a reasonable standard protocol in place for something that so greatly influences our children's educational, emotional, and physical well being. I also think the masks are psychologically damaging and they don't, they don't offer enough benefit to continue it. My kids report they don't always get mask breaks. If there's a fire drill, that's their mask break, even though they might have not been able to take off their mask. So I think we need to at least make sure that happens. But I think it's, I think it's a terrible thing. And I think the the benefits don't outweigh the risks or the harm we've already caused. I think if we really believed that masks worked and had a huge benefit, then we would issue N95 masks every day to elementary school students. There'd be a line item in the budget for it. You just do it instead of bringing the same snot rag that kids use for a week in the school every day. I think that causes more harm than good. I think that can create an opportunity for viruses and other bacteria to be transmitted. So thank you for listening and.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board?
There we go. Hi, my name is Kevin Agnello from Eight Lester Avenue in Pocketuck. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First, to Dr. Riley, thank you for your nine years of service to the town and to the board and to the students, of course. I just want to make a quick suggestion to the board and to Dr. Riley while you're still willing to dedicate your time. I work as a data analyst and educational researcher. A quick summary of the educational research regarding what makes effective superintendents. A common research methodology is for superintendents, school boards, the board chairman, and sometimes even community members. Researchers have them ranked order by importance, a list of characteristics on what they believe makes an effective superintendent. Once that qualitative data is collected, you can compare across groups, you can compile a list that is, that is catered to that municipality to hopefully help you seek out new superintendents. I'd like to make a suggestion to the board that again, while Dr. Riley is available, that might be a good exercise for the board to take on. Again, it's, it's well documented in the educational leadership research on what makes effective superintendents. It's very common, most commonly, or most recently, a 2017 study from the Journal of Educational Leadership outlines It's very common, most commonly, or most recently, a 2017 study from the Journal of Educational Leadership outlines the sort of methodology and I, I find it to be very effective. Just a quick suggestion to the board might be a great exercise for you all to take on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. There was one item that I passed over. My apologies to the board communications and recognitions. Farouk, I'll start with you. Do you have anything? Craig? Jack? No. Gordon, do you have anything on your side?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, consent agenda. There are eight items under the consent agenda, one set of minutes, checks and bills, personnel report, administrators, employment contract, policy 4118 point 51, 9,000 series minus the ones that are listed below, policy 3516 point 12, and policy 3524 point 2. Typically no discussion on the consent agenda unless you wish to remove something, which your pleasure.
I move the consent agenda A through H.
Motion made, there's a second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is first read approval of the following seven policies. The first one will be 9040.
Actually, is this on? Actually, the way that I'd like to approach this is not in consecutive order because the way organized it is really by theme because there's a lot of intersection of ideas in all of these. And so it will make a lot more sense. If I, if we could start actually, I'm going to start with 9212.
You can start with whatever one you want.
Okay, good. Um, I, I just, this exercise was really very healthy. And because it really shows the expectations of the board and what is expected. And, and particularly the careful language that needs to be used to describe all of this. So I know now that I'm going to spend a lot more time looking at and applying these bylaws. And that's what brings me to the first question, which is 9212. And that is, it's about amending the bylaws, the procedures to do that. And it says bylaw, bylaw proposals and suggested amendments, revisions or deletions of existing bylaws shall be submitted by the superintendent to the members of the board in writing prior to a regular meeting of the Board of Education. I would think that the board members would have equal jurisdiction to the superintendent in suggesting amendments, deletion, and revisions. And so I would change the beginning of that bylaw by saying, bylaws and suggested amendments, revisions, and deletions of existing bylaws may be submitted by the superintendent and the board members in writing prior to a regular meeting. How does this work? I just make a suggestion and then we just go on.
No. So you're, you're making a suggestion that you add board members to that as well?
Yes. And also use the word may, not um, shall. It's a little bit more independent choice. It's constructive.
Where's Mary Ann? Any, any issues with that? I think it makes sense.
I just want to remind the board that there are lawyers that craft these. And so when you change the language, it may have implications when you do so. I suspect that the reason the word shall be is there because we get updates constantly about changes to policies and, and the law. So that's probably why the language is so strong there, Heidi. That usually it comes through the superintendent, the notices of policy mandates that have to be updated or changes. That's probably why. I don't think it would prohibit the board from saying, you know, let's take a look at this bylaw or policy. We can add that language. But I just want to caution you as you go forward that some of these are.
I, what I wanted to understand is that I did not have to go through the superintendent if, as I began going through these bylaws a lot more carefully. And I will, I didn't, I, there's a lot more that I could have gone through, but it was, it, it was trialing. So as I go through this, and I discover that actually is something else that I would like to amend or tend to. I, I would like the procedure to be that I just put it in writing prior to a regular meeting of the Board of Ed, and then it's discussed. I don't know.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's prohibited.
What?
I don't think that's prohibited. In other words, it, it, to, to reference our, our conversation that we had earlier before the meeting, that depending on the structure that the new board wants to use going forward, some of those conversations might happen in a subcommittee level. If there's a policy subcommittee, it might be a natural thing that comes out of a conversation at a subcommittee level that you might want to reduce to writing and bring as a proposal to the full board. Or you might want to craft new language and bring that proposal to the new board out of a subcommittee. Should, should the new board decide to have that structure?
I think there's also, again, the legal issue in terms of, you know, the policies should be reviewed by an attorney and changes should be reviewed probably by an attorney to make sure they're not in violation. And also I see a logistical issue. You know, there's a procedure in terms of the first read and second read and all that and approval. Meaning if board members can just submit policy chat suggestions anytime they want, it could result in bogging a meeting or meetings down. Maybe it would be better to have the proposals submitted to the superintendent to then bring forward. And just to keep it a more orderly process and less disruptive one. Because I can see someone's, you, you know, for example, could say something, then next week I could come back and say, well, I'd like to, I'm suggesting this change. And then next week Frank says, well, I want, next month says this change. It just seems to introduce a lot of chaos to the process. So I think it's like Robert's Rules of Orders. I think you need to establish sort of a very orderly way of doing this. And I'm not saying board members shouldn't have the right to submit, but I think you need to put it, put into some sort of orderly structure. And again, that might be, it might be a legal issue as well too. So we should run that perhaps best our attorney.
Well, Heidi, maybe I'm misunderstanding. I think in your reading of this, you wanted to ensure that board members weren't precluded from being able to bring something forward.
Right. And I would like the rest of the board to hear what it was that I was saying, so it's discussed with all of them. Maybe whoever the superintendent is looks at it and decides, you know, I, I don't really like that. So it doesn't get any further than the superintendent. So the superintendent becomes a filter. And so what I'm saying is that, and, and I, hopefully, the board members would not be so frivolous is that they would just come up with ideas and popping into their head, but they had really put it together and actually had, I, I, I think that this is a good idea for a revision. And I don't think it was necessarily frivolous. And I don't think somebody's going to come up, you know, next board meeting and say, oh, no, I don't like that. I don't like that. And we get into silly arguments. But if, if this should be before the policy meeting, then we shouldn't go on here because I will just continue to mention things and it will be said that we need to be at a, we need to be in a smaller group talking about policy. So I'm a little, I'm a little confused about what it means on the first reading pool of bylaws. I, I'm suggesting that we rethink this. And there are others that I am suggesting to rethink. So maybe I don't understand what this, what we should be doing with this.
So then maybe what should happen is those policies are not discussed here and they're discussed in a workshop setting or in a policy meeting. And you hash out the language, you know, accordingly on those that you, you want to discuss. Like I know there is one that there were questions asked about and information passed back and forth that I think we could move forward on tonight and talk about. But the other ones perhaps, you know, need to be discussed in a smaller group in a workshop setting. Because everybody's going to have a different opinion. It's all going to be talked, talked through. Everybody has the right to be heard.
Okay, so I still plan to bring this up. At a policy meeting, because I think that there's language here which is confusing and and I, the bylaws are the foundation of us. And if, if it's vague or unstable, then we as a board will reflect the vagueness and unstableness. And I, and I, and I really do think that we should have the, the position of coming forward and discussing a bylaw. That only happens in the policy meeting, then we have to go back to having small subcommittees.
That, that's fine, Heidi. And I agree with you, the bylaws are critically important to how the board operates and we should take time to go through them. Not looking to push anything through that people are not ready to approve. That's why we separated them up.
So we know that those haven't been proved yet and they will come up in a policy.
We'll, we'll bring them up.
So Heidi, also I would ask Heidi, if you have specific questions about each one, just email those to me. And that might help, help me get prepared to have that conversation as well. If there's something that I need to run by one of our attorneys or something, or something that I can actually just answer because I have the context for it, I'd be happy to do that.
And I take that a step further. I would encourage you to include the entire board so the board understands what, you know, your concerns are, what any board member's concerns are. So everybody's on the same page going into the discussion.
Well, I, I think that, I think the discussion in 9040 and 9400 about the board's self-evaluation, something that's really interesting because I don't know about a strategy or a tool. It's a place for board self-evaluation. And I think that was something that really needed to be discussed and figured out because they're asking for questionnaires and gathering data from the, the constituents and doing it equally and honestly. And those are words that are just thrown out there and aren't really very thoughtful and applicable to what it is that they're speaking about. So this, if this is not the place where I want to hold this for a policy meeting and be able to, to speak about each one of these because I think, I think bylaws are really important. That's, that's what drives us, that's what organizes.
Absolutely correct. And I would ask that you just line out your concerns or your questions so that the whole board has the ability to understand where your concerns are coming from. So it can be a constructive discussion.
At the policy meeting.
Frank? Yes?
If possible, I'd like to make a change to 9160, a proposed change. And we've already discussed it as a board. Well, I don't believe it's a change that we need to go through our attorney. Is that okay? Yes, sir. Okay. 9160 talks about many things, but number one on the list is the member, it's a student rep to the Board of Education will be recommended by the high school principal to, by the high school principal to the superintendent of schools. I would like that to be similar to what we've been doing. Or I'd like to recommend that it be the student council president or a member of student council. It's important to me that the student rep who represents the students is chosen by the students. So I don't know if our student rep has any comment on that, but.
Can I just give some context for that, Jack? Because through this process, as you know, these haven't been looked at in quite a few decades. And as part of the process, the, the policy that you're referring to about the past practice of this, this, the president of the student council, that was a policy passed in 1995. This policy you have in front of you is actually, it was passed in 2012 by the board. The only addition to it as it is approved and is posted on our website right now is, is 8D. And I just, you know, that's your, just just for your context for your conversation. That's just before you go.
Yeah, yeah. So in my tenure here, the past four years, there have been times when the student rep has made some really good suggestions, comments. Perhaps they were not comments that necessarily the board, excuse me, the administration would want to hear, but I think they were very constructive. And I feel like it came from the students. And I also feel like if, if the student was chosen by the, the, the Stone High School principal, perhaps they may think twice about coming forward with an issue. Maybe not, but maybe they would. And so it's really important to me and it's been very valuable to have a candid discussion with our student rep. And so I, you know, it doesn't have to be the student council president, but it's important to me that the students, and let me, one, one other quick point. I believe that how the student government is formed is each, each grade has an election. They pick representatives and then those representatives choose one person to lead them, which in this case would be Kyle. And so it just makes sense that he would be the person sitting here representing the students of Stone High School. So that is why I would like to see the change.
Ah, yes, that is correct. That is the process for how I was elected president. Another big part of this discussion, I think, is that as president, my role is a pretty public one in the school. People do know that I'm in this position, which I don't think you would see as much with an independent board rep because unfortunately, most students are not terribly invested in the Board of Education. And I also have the advantage that I sit in a 40-member meeting once a week of elected students and that they know that I'm here and that they're welcome to bring up any issues to me. And I think that's definitely worth considering when you choose how to, um, pick a board rep.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate your input. Any other board members have comments on what Jack is asking?
I totally agree with it. I didn't, you, man, did you say that we had voted on this that could be recommended by the high school principal?
In the, in the archives, Heidi, as I was going through this process, I found on, on what is now through cave anyways, that a, a policy that was numbered, I don't have the number in front of me, but it is an obsolete policy by Cave's model. But it was a 1995 policy that is reflective of what the current practice has been. However, the board, whatever, whoever the configuration of the board was in 2012, must have been talking about revising some policies because they, they use this number, which is the current model number, the 160. And, and this, this is the policy again, that is posted on our website, absent 8D. And that's the language that exists. That's all I'm telling you. So I call it completely up to you what you want to do. If you want to revert to the 1995 model, that's fine. That's your decision. I'm just giving you the context.
I didn't hear you.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, if you're, if we're looking to make a change to the policy, we're going to have to make a motion to change it, correct?
I make a motion and please change the language to, you'll go get the sentiment. That the member will be, that the student rep to the Board of Education will be the student council vice president and/or someone, a student chosen by the student council. That's in case the student council president decides they don't want to do it.
Right.
That's the only change you're seeking?
Yes.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Motion made, there's a second, any discussion? Motion made. There's a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I fully support what Jack is suggesting. I just suggest that any changes get run first by one of our lawyers to ensure that the language is appropriate. I 100% support what Jack is saying. I'm just making, the suggestion is that if we are changing a bylaw, we should consult with our attorney.
Can I have a point of clarification? Do you want the rest of the language of this version to remain as far as the duties go? And just those, that wording? Okay. I just want to be clear.
And I agree with.
Any other discussion?
Could I hear the motion again? Cause I'm just, I'm still, I'm not completely clear. I want to be completely clear what I'm voting on. Okay, it may be different the second time around. The student rep to the Stonington Board of Education shall be the student council vice president and/or someone of the choosing of the students or student council. Please clean that up.
It's the student, student council president, right?
Student council president.
Or a representative.
From the student council, correct. Okay.
And did you say chosen by, this is, this is nuanced, Jack. Okay. Chosen by the student council or a student council member?
I would say chosen by the student. So then collectively, they can pick the person they want, which ultimately is, will represent the student.
Do we have a rap?
It's, it's a rap, but the motion has to be withdrawn and amended to include the legal review. Are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the motion's modified to ensure that there's a legal review of the suggested change. You second that, Heidi? Yes?
I seconded again.
Thank you. Motion made. There's a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
All right.
And then the others, we will, we will move.
Yeah. And it sounds like when we discuss this, that we should have a lawyer present.
If that is your wish, yes.
Or you can, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but rather than having a lawyer present because that bill can rack up very quickly is to create a list of changes that you'd like suggested.
And submit them.
Submit them to the lawyers and through Mary Ann. And that way we kind of like manage also our legal.
And then when does the board get to see it? When it's been cleaned up?
When it comes from committee. So I think it goes through committee, right? Committee reviews bylaws. With, with committee goes back to Mary Ann says, here's what we want changed. Mary Ann takes that, sends it to our legal council. Ensure those changes are appropriate by law. Brings them back to the committee. Committee sees and approves those changes, brings them back to the board for a first read and second read.
Yeah, that's good. That's what they need to understand.
Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent announcement. On October 12th, the board received a letter of resignation from Dr. Riley announcing his retirement from Stonyton Public Schools after nine years of service. I think before, you know, we have a discussion, we need to, you know, move on accepting the, the letter and then you know, we can, we can discuss as a board. Dr. Riley, anything you want to share before we move that forward?
Well, this is a difficult decision. Some people say, are you happy or sad? And the answer is yes. It's been a marvelous experience helping this district move forward for the last nine years. Retirement comes when it comes. When you turn 70 years old and you're looking at what's the next chapter of your life, retirement sounds pretty good. And I have a lot of other kinds of plans going. I did want to just let the board know that I'd like to stay until you have a permanent replacement. I think that's important. In my experience, having interims is, causes some inconsistency and just one other change you don't need. And we can certainly talk about that in the, in the process, but that's, that's my intent to continue to work hard for this district until you have a new, a new superintendent. But I'd like to thank you all for everything over these last nine years and your support. And looking forward to the search process and moving on. Thank you.
Entertain a motion to accept Dr. Riley's letter. Motion made. There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So the timing of, of the letter, just with the pending election, it kind of complicates how you, you move forward. I mean, the process is the process. The board needs to come together and, and determine what they are looking for in the next superintendent. Mr. Ragnello had some suggestions as to how to utilize, you know, benchmarking and, and data and then it's you engage a consultant. Typically, you have community search committees. And then the board ultimately makes that final decision and it's typically a four to six month process. Having been through that, when we hired Dr. Riley nine years ago, I was on the board along with Craig and we went through that similar process. Certainly want to hear from my colleagues on the board, but my personal opinion on how to move forward is there's an election in, in three weeks. This board coming together with four members that are no longer going to be on it, deciding what they want in the next superintendent. I don't know that that makes a whole lot of sense to me, but I'm one of seven and certainly want to hear from my colleagues. Gordon?
Yeah, no, I, I agree. And I think to be fair to the incoming board, but I do think it might be worth us meeting to sit down and talk through some of those things. So we, we give the incoming board, you know, a head start on that and not wait three or four weeks. So, but I do agree, but I think, I think it's worth a, with a separate meeting.
And I second what Gordon said. I think we should meet and discuss this. I, I do agree with you of the respect given to the future board members. However, I think the insight and opinion of the departing board members, I mean, Alice has been on the board for many, many years and she's very insightful and she adds a lot of, you know, depth to the conversation. So I think her opinion matters, your opinion matters, Jack's opinion matter, Gordon's opinion matter. So those, those opinions should, even if we don't start necessarily, or we don't go to that search committee, but if we gather that opinion from the four departing board members, you know, it'd be valuable for the remaining board members and the future board members, and it'll be valuable for the community and the administration.
I agree.
Okay. So that seems to be the consensus of the board, Greg? Yes. Okay. So I'll work with Onit to set up a special meeting. Um, next item on the agenda, report from the superintendent, Dr. Riley, I believe the SIP is the only item now under that.
Yes. Each year we bring to the board our CIP plan. We do not, I, I want Peter and Chris will come up and give you a brief summary. They each have, there's a binder of backup for each of these items. And that whole, all that detail will be shared with the Board of Finance. We can certainly, we will have copies of that available here at the district office if any board member is interested. But they can give you a summary of where we are and what their requests are this year.
So the requested budget for the incoming year for technology, we have the security systems and cameras for district office and some of the other buildings. We have the phone system that is for additional handsets and licensing. The Chromebook one-to-one program, we've got the Dean's Mill refresh up next. The computer systems infrastructure, that is for switching fiber optics and wireless upgrades throughout the district. Staff computers, that is for replacement laptops and beginning to build a fund for a larger refresh coming up in a few years. And the audio video systems for the district, we've got board of ed meeting room upgrades, the commons and the auditorium. And that is it for the technology SIP. Are there any questions?
Chris, you said the phone system, is that like replacement or addition?
We've already upgraded the phone system. That is additional handsets added into the district for additional users and spaces requiring phones. And Chris, how often are we refreshing student computers?
Student Chromebooks are being refreshed once every four years. So we're doing each building once a year. We've got a self-insurance policy now. So typically we did three years for refresh. We've been able to extend that out to four years with our self-insurance policy with the district now as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chris before he ends off? Thanks, Chris.
So starting off with number seven, the PCB air monitoring, that's been handled by the town, but that is, should be ending this year. We just had our last test done. District office phase two AC and a classroom upgrade is on hold until we get more lined up with what's going on with the district office. Roof ladders and cables are, is, I'm sorry, hold on a minute. Roof ladders and cables is an additional amount. So we've got, gone out to bed. It's, we are, we're, we're short on that. High school rooftop and rebuild for the gym AC would be the last RTU unit above the gym, which would add the AC unit for that area and rebuild that. Kitchen upgrade is the, for some additional equipment required across the district in, in all the kitchens. Upgrade to the BMS is for the Stony to Mill School side. Library flooring and repair is to replace the library at the high school, or replace the library rug at the high school. Mini vans, in addition to adding one, is a replacement policy to go through all the vans that's adding their mileage limit. High school generator upgrade is to re, re, repurpose all the panels that we have in the building to accurately use the generator that we have on site at the high school. High school gym upgrade is to refinish flooring and over a period of time add, replace the curtains and replace paths in the, in the area as well as the scoreboard. SMS room project has been completed. Middle school AC upgrade is to, to, to add the AC in the middle school in, in combination with the art funding and the town's funding. Replace maintenance trucks in, in the district is to replace trucks that have hit end of life. Middle school science room upgrade is to add in and for the overflow of, of, of the, of the school to change what are existing classrooms into science rooms more appropriately. Floor burners are to replace some of the district's cleaning equipment. Trap and turf replacement is repair for this year and then savings account over the years after to start thinking about our turf replacement. We're coming close to the end of life on that. High school roof repair is for a large section of the roof that has lost its bond to the deck. And also a savings policy to start saving for the roof that's going to be replaced. It's, it's heading into like, we're, we're at 16 years and that roof is only a 20-year life. Interior painting repairs for general painting around the district. Classroom furniture is for general classroom furniture around the district replacement. And the security upgrade for district office is for all to replace the remaining locks that have not been replaced in this building. Any questions?
Any questions for Peter? Thank you, Peter. Uh, next item on the agenda, monthly reports. There were four, finance, food service, facilities, enrollment and student government report. Kyle, is there anything you want to address in your report with the board?
My report, as I'm sure you saw, highlighted the college fair, the activities fair, and just some great activities we've had going on. They're feeling closer and closer to normal. You know, I want to recognize my fellow student government members and the staff for all the work that they've done. Other than that, I am all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Any comments on any of the other reports from board members or questions? All right. Moving forward, items for future agendas. I know, Jack, you told me that you had one.
Yeah, I mean, just, just when you thought you got rid of me. So I will not be here, obviously, the next time, but I've asked Heidi to do a follow-up with all of these. So these are items that have been in the back of my mind and with COVID, Dr. Riley's, you know, been up to his ears with, you know, trying to deal with that. So I haven't really brought these items forward, but this is my last meeting. And so I'm going to throw all caution to the wind here and, and these, this is something I've spoken to in the, about in the past. And so I'm sure you all saw on the news recently, the Wall Street Journal, New York Times did a report about Facebook and Instagram and how it's negatively impacting our, our kids. And there was a whistleblower and she testified in front of Congress. And this was research that was internal within Facebook and it was leaked. And so, you know, their own research suggested that teens, regardless of gender, blame Instagram for increased anxiety and feelings of depression, while some 6%, 6 out of 100 young women traced their use of, of Instagram to suicidal thoughts. Facebook knew for years that Instagram worsened body image in one in three teen girls. And a significant number of them, 32%, said Instagram made them feel worse about their bodies. There's a teacher right here in Connecticut. His name is Chris Doyle. He commented in, in the New York Times report. And he said that, you know, as a teacher of 30 years, he has seen a profound shift toward constant self-evaluation that he associates with so, social media use. Kids rack up aptances because they feel overwhelmed on a daily basis. And as a father of three daughters, all very much are different in their own right, but all have struggled. I hate to say that publicly, but all have struggled with their use of, you know, these, these platforms. So, you know, I had mentioned at one point about doing wait till eighth, which is this concept where we have parents collectively ask their, or as a whole, sign a pact that they will not give their, their student, their, their children a, a smartphone until the eighth grade. You know, it's in today's day and age, it's really hard to do. But I do know that anxiety and mental health have been a real issue. During my four years, the students themselves on their own have implemented a mental health day where they invited mental health professionals to come to the high school and speak and auditorium was packed. And I also noticed as I walked out, there was a, a line of students waiting to speak with some of these professionals. Also, we had a, I think, Allison had a forum here, right, about mental health and was very well attended. So what I would like to ask, it's gonna end up being Mary Ann, is, you know, what can we do as a district? Now, this is an overwhelming problem, you know, little Stonyton High School and District of Stonyton can't solve this problem. But there are schools that are doing subtle things to try to help combat this. So as an example, can we integrate into our health curriculum some ways to give our students tools to deal with how we access these apps? How they, they use their time management, how to, you know, and you can use some of these apps going forward to your benefit as well. But you have to create a good online reputation. There are privacy issues. What can we do as a district to help these students understand what they're seeing online isn't necessarily true? And how to help deal with some of these, these, the anxiety around being constantly bombarded with this thing in your pocket? The last thing that I thought was pretty interesting that I read about was this teacher, it's a science teacher, I forget the high school. But she noticed their kids were constantly distracted by their phones and they were using their phones. It was a science class to help, you know, kids could use them to look, look things up. But the phones are constantly going off. So she took a day and she said, okay, today, you know, we're going to do just one day. I've got this whiteboard. I'm going to have you every time. I've got this whiteboard. I'm going to have you every time you get a notification on your phone, Instagram, whatever, whatever you're on, I want you to come up and put a mark on the whiteboard. And there was one student there that had a hundred and fifty marks in an hour and forty minutes class. How can you possibly be an effective student when you have that kind of distraction going off in your pocket? You know, on a regular basis. So I think it's a real problem. And again, I don't expect our school system to solve it, and I think a lot of it falls on parents. But there are maybe subtle things that we can do to help our students. And I know that there are other districts that are doing just that. So if if you could explore that and get back to not me, but the next Board of Education, I would appreciate that. And then the second thing is this is near and dear to me. I know because I have a high schooler that's in chorus right now that the numbers are dismal. And I have a feeling, and it's not for me to say, but I'd like to ask the administration to look into, you know, what is causing this? And I have a feeling part is going to be the pandemic, but there the number, like the chorus numbers are really low, band numbers are low at the high school. And I feel like part of it stems from the middle school and the fact that I know my kids had, you know, on on jazz band and select chorus. In other words, they had after school programs for students that wanted to take it to the next level. And those kids tended to go into the high school and sign up for drama chorus band. So can you get back to the next board and let them know what the status is of all that and what things you as an administration could possibly do to help boost the numbers? Because there are so many nice community events like the pops at the end of the school year and all the drama programs. We need kids to be enough kids to be interested in 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 music in order to have those kind of community marching band, another example, in order to have those events in our town and what a loss it would be if we don't have those events. So please look into that. Thank you for the follow up.
Were were they allowed to have band this year with the instruments? I thought that they you weren't allowed to use any kind of wind instruments or things.
I I'd like to leave it up to them to explain all that at the next meeting. Because I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
I just know that I'm pretty sure they don't have a a select chorus anymore in a jazz band. I think that may be impacting.
Yeah, but we tried hard. I mean, I think that that's that you really have educated us about the idea that we need to have middle school is where it's that's sort of the elementary school of music. And we had that music teacher who was so good. So we really have to allocate funds to attract a good person and do it early.
And I believe they can they can comment. I think they hired somebody and, you know. So hopefully, if you can just do a catch up on that.
Thank you, Jack. Any other items from board members?
I just want to comment on that. They they do have the band players. And I went to their concert at the end of the year last year and they did a great job. And the music teacher at the high school has done a tremendous job in ensuring that the program continues. And I agree with Jack. We need to look into how we increase the numbers, but they do have.
They got some embers there.
Any other items from board members? Okay, moving on. Board member comments and concerns. Any board members? Jack?
Could you comment on whether the internet's up and going again and all the disruption around?
Yeah.
Whatever issue we had. Or no?
I don't know.
There's there's still the investigation is still underway and they're still making some repairs.
Do the students have access to? What's the status of that?
Yes, they do. There are a few programs that they don't. It's not a hundred percent there, but we have the typical things that students can use to access, yeah.
Any other board member comments, Gordon?
I would just like to thank Dr. Riley, the administration, Mary Ann for, this is my last meeting, Jack's last meeting, and this has been a great experience for me. I want to thank you for your leadership in this district. I'm very proud to have four children in this district and I believe you leave our district in a much better place than where you are here. And I guess I would just say, you know, we as a community continue to focus on the positive. I mean, the pandemic has been brutal for for everybody. I think everybody's doing the best they can, and I I think we're all trying to do even more, but I do think we have to continue to celebrate the positive. I think we get weighed down on the on the negative way too much. Not to say that that we ignore it, but we absolutely have to celebrate the positive. So John, thank you, Dr. Riley, for everything. I wish you great, great enjoyment in your in your retirement and hopefully we'll still see you around town. So thank you.
For I also would like to congratulate Dr. Riley on her retirement. Thank you for what you've done to our community and our children. And since my tenure on the board, I've learned a lot from you and from the team and you've been a, you know, a rock in the last eighteen months that we could depend and trust in. So we appreciate you and I wish you the best in your retirement and to my fellow board members that are departing. I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss your leadership and your thoughtfulness, all of you. And I promised Jack that I'll do my best to carry on the music torch. And I'll probably I'll be fighting on your behalf. And but music baton, better better wording. I always can depend on Craig correcting me. English is my second language, but Dr. Riley, thank you so much.
Any anybody else? So this is my last meeting. I've been on the board for, I was on the board for eight years or seven years the first time and then came back for a year and four months. Most of that time I I've been board chair. It certainly has been an honor to serve this community. I was not born and raised here. My wife and I chose to raise our family here primarily because of the schools. That's what attracted us. And it's been an honor to be able to give back to the community. Dr. Riley, you have been the superintendent for most of that time. Certainly, I I think you leave the district in a better place than you found it. And I have learned a lot from you over the years. We have a very talented administrative team and we have very talented teachers that are very dedicated to the students in the community and the community at large. So thank you for all that you do on a daily basis. It's not easy work, but it is important work. And to my fellow board members, it's been a pleasure to serve with you. And those of you that will continue on, I wish you the best of luck and the new members coming on. You buckle your seatbelt. You have a lot coming at you pretty quick. So best of luck to everybody. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made. Is there a second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.